"That went down to the Spirit of his Ermun, and the dew of Ermun, and as the dew that descended upon the mountains of Zion. For there the Lord commanded the blessings, even life forevermore. Amen." Let's take the second scripture, Psalm 8:118, Psalm 118 from verse 23 to verse 25. Psalm of David 118, from verse 23 to verse 25. After that we're going to sing our amazing words as we're studying our service. Psalm 118, verse 25. This is the Lord's doing, it's marvelous in my eyes. This is the day which the Lord of men will rejoice and be glad. Save now by the six thee, O Lord! O Lord, have the six thee sent now prosperity. Amen. We're going to take amazing words, I'll sing a song that saved a witch like me as we're studying our service. Amen. Thee brings our sleep and our joy. My sin the wish I did. Oh, I want what I want. The love I've got. As God was mine and mine was mine. Those words that took my heart to keep. Ooh, as grace was grace. The love to me and grace. And me your peace. Ooh, I pray and share. Amen. From the hour from the hour. Oh, through many events, Lord. To make thee bend and bless all. I have I have already found. Oh, this praise Oh, it's a great one. And we be here. Oh, for now. When we be loved and oh. And share. This song. Oh, with all the praise with all to say the praise. And hallelujah. We're going to sing hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Oh, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Thank you, God. Hallelujah. Amen. We're going to raise our voices to God, thanking for this moment. We also don't surrender this moment to the God in God's hand so that the presence of God may visit us, so that this service might be a special service. Let's raise our voices and pray. Hallelujah. 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 Yes, Lord, we thank you. We worship the Lord Jesus Christ. We surrender this moment, Lord. Thank you for this beautiful opportunity, Lord God, that has given us to be together here with Jesus Christ. For your own glory, we're here, Lord God. We're not here for any man's glory, but to celebrate the risen Lord of Jesus Christ. The Savior has risen forever. The one that left a name to pray, hallelujah. Oh, we love you, Lord God. We worship you, Lord Jesus Christ. This is the worship of our people, Lord God. The Holy Spirit coming down on Jesus Christ and our presence taking over every man, every situation, Lord God. Oh, gracious God. You come down, Lord God. And you speak to us in a mighty word. And you bless us, Lord Jesus Christ. And our presence fill this house, Lord God. And the presence fill the outskirts, Lord God. And the presence take over everything in the name of Jesus Christ. We have been praying for Jesus, the risen one, the mighty one, a comforter, a comforter of our souls, a friend of all, and Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. Oh, gracious God. Amen. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Amen. Hallelujah. Amen. Hallelujah. Amen. Thee brings peace and love is in the Son of God. Oh, Jesus. He speaks well-golding Oh, he the voice of Jesus. He is the risen one. He is the one. Hallelujah. He is the risen one. He is the risen one. Your medicines are all given. Oh, he the voice of Jesus. Go on your way. It is to heaven and where we're from with Jesus. He is the risen one. He is the one. Oh, Jesus. He is the risen one. Jesus Christ. The Lord has said that Jesus Christ, we're going to say thank you for the Spirit for the time that has been given us, eyes. And yet you are the great physician. You are the great doctor. You are the good one. You are the mighty God, you're the creator of heaven and earth. You are the maker of our souls. And the believer, Lord God, that we're here. You are here because you saved our world. Wherever you are, or your people, oh God, in the name, I'm going to be among them. No believer, Lord God, that you never fail, I just promise you. We're here, we're so happy, we're so blessed. We're so in joy because we believe, oh God, that in service we not gather just like any other person, like any other people. But we're gathered here as the believers. We're gathered here as the saints. We're gathered here as people that witness the resurrection, Lord Jesus Christ. And we believe that you are mighty, you are strong, and then you're going to outspread thy presence and thy power here, oh precious God. Now, Lord Jesus Christ, we ask you, oh precious God, to forgive our sins, to forgive our trespasses, to forgive all our wrongdoings, Lord God, and for the whole week, or in one way or another, if we went against our world, Lord Jesus Christ. We're asking you, Lord, and God, to look at us through the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ because you believe, precious Father, if you look at us through the blood, there won't be any judgment. You've got to justify us, Lord God. Oh, precious God. Now, I have control over everything. Bless us, Lord God. Bless the whole program. Oh, may you bless our visitors, Lord God. May you bless everyone that's here, that can be, Lord God. May you bless the whole congregation. May you bless the program. May you bless everything. May you bless the songs. May you bless the world after they listen to you. May you bless everything that's going to take place here, Lord God. Everything will be led by you, the Holy Spirit. You're the Lord Jesus Christ. We thank you, Lord God, you believe that you're going to you're going to bless us. You're going to descend. You're going to come down. You're going to give us joy. You're going to give us happiness. You're going to give us relief. Oh, thank you, God. In the name of Jesus Christ we pray. Amen. Let us give a proclamation to the Lord Jesus. Amen. Please, my disciples. Amen. Oh, we welcome you all in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Oh, we're so happy to have you around. So happy to have you, our visitors and everyone. We are so blessed to have you, amen. Can we put our hands together for the visitors that are here? We appreciate it. Amen. We appreciate you being here with us. We're here to celebrate our the Lord Jesus Christ. We believe that the Lord that is good has given us this beautiful time. So, thank you very much. We are going to proceed our program quick, as quick as possible. All right, we go to our thing that is special here. We go to worship the Lord Jesus Christ. We're going to take a song. And then after that, we'll call the sister that wrote the special song. We're going to sing, "Oh, happy day that fixed my toes." We're going to worship you. Feel free to feel like you want to stand up, you want to clap your hands. Any position, just be free as you're worshiping the Lord Jesus Christ. Oh, happy day that fixed my toes. Only myself you're my God. Thou madest all and how we go until it's worked. So, so, happy day. Happy day. Oh, when Jesus was passing He taught me how. He taught me how to watch and pray. Oh, and live with joy. See every day. Oh, happy day. Oh, happy day. When Jesus was passing second verse. Oh, happy day that fixed my God. To him who came this was my life. Oh, making all night and from day to day one to last for shine. Happy day. Happy day. When Jesus was passing He taught me how. He taught me how to watch and pray. Oh, and live with joy. See every day. Oh, happy day. Happy day. When Jesus was passing and I'm a great one that shone down. I am my Lord and he is mine. He's doing me and follow on and to God. Then both he passed the day. Happy day. Happy day. When Jesus was passing He taught me how. He taught me how to watch and pray. Oh, and live with joy. See every day. Oh, happy day. Happy day. When Jesus was passing away. All the heavens amen. We are going to take all the wings of the God.
Yes, sir.
All the wings of the God as we are worshiping them, amen. No, I have on the ground that he is. He serves all. Oh, in very excellent. Oh, God, oh, yeah. What's more than that? He's a God. Oh, baby. Oh, yeah. On the way to on the way to the Lord. I said, I did one. Oh, it's not for that. He's the one. He's the one. Saying that he's oh, it's not for oh. Did you forget? Oh, Jesus that and to the who he was ever in that for him to oh, he I do not know about. God gave us life. Oh, God gave us all the way, come on. He kept us. On the way to the Lord. I said, I did see oh, it's not for oh. He's the oh, God, I many ways. Many ways. I saw him. Oh, I saw him. Oh, God. Oh, God, I this one. Oh, that's I saw him. I saw him. He's a oh. On the way to on the way to the Lord. I saw him. I said, I did oh, it's not for oh. He's the oh, God, this is oh, yeah. Good, great God, amen. Let's take a little, they have a song before we forward, and I think this is like heaven to me. Oh, we have special, I think it's time for it. If the sisters are wearing a special, I think they can come forwards. You can be seated as the sisters have a special song. They can come forward to sing.
You don't have to worry and don't you be afraid. The day of morning troubles they oh, there's a friend in Jesus who wipe your tears away. And if your heart is broken just let your heart say. Oh, I know that I can make you. I know that I can save you. No matter what we come away our life is in your hands. You don't have to worry and don't you be afraid. Just comes in the morning troubles they oh, there's a friend in Jesus who wipe your tears away. And if your heart is broken just let your heart say. Oh, I know that I can make you. I know that I can save you. No matter what we come away our life is in your hands. With Jesus I can take you. With him I know I can stand. No matter what we come away our life is in your hands. Whether there's a trial may seem to get to die. And oh, your friends and loves one I know it will be fine. Remember that there's a friend in Jesus who wipe your tears away. And if your heart is broken just let your heart say. Oh, I know that I can make you. I know that I can save you. No matter what we come away our life is in your hands. With Jesus I can take you. With him I know I can stand. No matter what we come away our life is in your hands. No matter what we come away our life is in your hands.
Amen. Oh, thank you for the special, may the Lord bless you. We know that no matter what comes on our way, that our life is in the hand of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. All right, we are going to carry on with our program. Actually, we're going to sing one more song. And then after that, we're going to call upon Brother Mike for the rest of the program. We're going to say, to take one last song. This is like heaven to me. After that last song, or that we're going to sing all of us, and then we'll be calling Brother Mike to proceed with the program. This is like heaven to me. Amen. How many people how many people can understand? While we are so happy and free with our sorrow, joy, and to plan and store. And this is once again, let's repeat again, we're far many people. How many people who can understand? While we are so happy and free with our with our wonder and to plan and and this is our heaven today. Oh, this is is our heaven today. When God this is our heaven today. Oh, our first and golden to heaven. And this is our heaven today. Oh, this is this is our heaven today. When God this is our heaven today. Our first and golden to heaven. And this is our heaven today. When I get happy I see and shout and get all the big and see my love for us to the reason that I and that's what I know. Oh, this is is our heaven today. Oh, this is our heaven today. Oh, God our first and golden to heaven. Oh, and this is our heaven today. Oh, yes, this is our heaven today. Oh, yes, oh, this is our heaven today. Oh, our first and golden to heaven. And this is our heaven today. Amen. We are still in the form of a man. We're going to worship the Lord Jesus Christ. It's Lord Jesus Christ for the glory of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Good afternoon, everybody. Shalom, we say, amen. Peace of the Lord be with you. Amen. Before I say anything, before I call upon her sister, the dish, if she can come and sing. Brother, just give me a sister, if she can forward this. They might give her a sister, so I can
Shalom.
Namikolo, na diboso, bo lo si be. Oe te ngamo, di poli, pro le na e. O ma na luki, ngai na luki. Na mo li liya we, ke bo na ba. Ka bo bambar, de na si bo, de le ma wa. Yo si pe, o na bucho, o na bucho. Dea na diboso, si to ka te. Dea ka ma, dea ka ma. Titi kolo, na bo. Oh, yesu kamba, yesu kamba. Kai ma kasia we, sa buya. Na bo le te, e ku e te, kai ma. Eka leka leka, ni masi. Oh, yesu kamba, yesu kamba. Kai ma kasia we, sa buya. Na bo le te, e ku e te, kai ma. Eka leka leka, ni masi. Shalom.
Amen, amen, amen. Give a hand across to the Lord, praise be to God. Amen. Are you happy to be in the house of the Lord? Can we shake our hand and say hello to somebody, good morning, afternoon, happy to have you around?